Bills. We have a bill for petty cash postage. And we have Stonebridge Press. The total for the petty cash and Stonebridge Press comes to two hundred and twenty-nine dollars and sixty-four cents. We have another one from Massachusetts Association of Planning Directors for a meeting of eighty-five dollars and phone bill reimbursement of eighty-six dollars and seventy-four cents. Total of one, one hundred and seventy-one dollars and seventy-four cents. And we have nine invoices from Graves Engineering for different projects that they've done for us in the last couple of weeks. All the invoices are enclosed. The total for that amount is six thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars and ten cents. Do I have a motion to accept the bill as read?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll sign it later.
Yep.
Um, we have some correspondence. Household hazardous waste collection day. It will be Saturday, September twenty-sixth, two thousand and fifteen, nine AM to one PM, Casella's Waste Service Facility at one sixty-five Bearfoot Road across from the landfill. We have, um, correspondence from the CMRPC, Open House and Quarterly Meeting Notice, Thursday, September tenth, two thousand and fifteen. Do you have anything in common on that, Alan?
Yeah, um, something I'm a little surprised and disappointed. I'm curious when Jean is the rep, what she sees when she goes to the meetings. They hired a national consultant to replace the retiring director, Larry Adams. He retired June thirtieth, and my understanding is that they had offered it to a very experienced, older regional executive director in Connecticut who chose not to take it when he realized it was creating issues for his accrued pension in Connecticut. So, I'm kind of shocked to see that. And then I talked to a few people around the county. When I saw that, they, I forgot her exact name. Is it Jean Pierce?
Yeah.
Yeah. They made the bookkeeper, the executive director of the CMRPC. I mean, that's a, one of thirteen regional agencies in the state. They should have an experienced, professional, certified planner. That's no offense. That's the equivalent of my job being assigned to a town government bookkeeper. And I just think it's very, very dysfunctional and I'm disappointed. Nothing against her personally. I've met her. She's a nice lady. But I just think that the region deserves better for planning than having the executive director, a non-AICP certified, experienced woman or man. And that's very strange. And I'm wondering if there's motivation there from the selection committee of more control internally or something? I don't know what's going on, but it's very odd. I've never seen anything like that, frankly. Yeah? So Jean will be going to these meetings. Let's see what she thinks. So I just wanted to point that out.
Uh, Town of Chelton Zoning Board of Appeals. At a meeting held on August fourth, two thousand and fifteen, the Zoning Board of Appeals voted to approve an appeal of the zoning board laid letter dated May twenty-eighth, two thousand and fifteen, submitted by GMP Realty Trust Pro Shaper Sheet Metal LLC, relative to property located at two fifty-three Worcester Road, assessive map thirty-six, lot one, block A. The petitioners is and are the owners of certain premises situated at two fifty-three Worcester Road. The petitioners is seeking the following: To appeal the Town of Chelton Zoning Enforcement Office's decision, letter dating May twenty-eighth, two thousand and fifteen, a motion to overturn the zoning enforcement office's decision dated May twenty-eighth, two thousand and fifteen. The business is a sheet metal business, not an auto repair shop. It looks like it was approved.
That was the other one that was signed about.
Okay. Did they let go with the pass?
That they overturned Kurt's interpretation. And I agree with Kurt that it's, everything he showed me and look that he received in writing, everything he discussed with me, I agree with his interpretation, isn't auto body shop. And the argument is because he does some sheet metal specialty work there, that it's sheet metal and he can be in there.
What's the address again on that?
Uh, two fifty-three Worcester Road.
It's sixth form, correct? Yeah, it's in that in sixth form business park.
Gotcha.
Yeah. But I, it's, you know, they're entitled to their opinion. I respect it, but I agree with the bill.
Just that they got a, they called themselves a sheet metal company.
He showed me correspondence he received from their lawyer trying to make the argument that they're a caraging business. I've never heard that phrase before. That he specializes in restoration of rare historical vehicles. But that is auto body.
It's up by the granite place. That's what it is.
Is it?
Yeah. It's up by, next to the granite place.
Oh, and the top went to the left when he walked down?
Yes, 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 where the power washing place.
Yep.
Yep. That's what it is. Now you mentioned that carriage and that custom. Gotcha.
Yeah. But he said, Kurt told me that at the meeting, they gave a percentage of sheet metal and a percentage of auto body. And they felt, well, he does sheet metal, let him have it. But that's sheet metal. That's not the auto body. It's an odd decision.
Please, second.
Yeah.
Another zoning board of appeals. At a meeting held August fourth, two thousand and fifteen, the zoning board of appeals voted to approve and amend to an existing MGL Chapter forty B comprehensive permit submitted by the Chelton Housing Authority, relative property located at one Meadowview Drive. The petitioner seeks to modify to an existing MGL C forty B plan to build an, to build an extension to a garage that will be within the setback, yard setbacks. Um, that was approved. Again, Chelton Zoning Board of Appeals. At a meeting, August fourth, two thousand and fifteen, the zoning board of appeals voted to approve a variance slash special permit submitted by Bernard Graffia, relative to property located at ninety-two Brookfield Road, assessive map sixteen, lot two, blocks B. Presently located on the premises is storage sheds. The petitioner seeks to build four more storage sheds. It was approved. The Town of Leicester, certificate of decision on a special permit, one forty-nine Whitebird Street, Leicester, one point eight four-four acres, to house and raise two horses. The zoning board of appeals moved to approve the petitioner of one forty-nine Whitebird Street, Leicester, Mass, for a special permit to allow the keeping of two horses on the property, along with four conditions noted. The conditions are limited to two horses, the structure for the horses not to be closer than ten feet from the lot line, the storage of manure is not to be kept closer than twenty feet from the lot line, the manure is to be removed at least once a month. Horses in your backyard?
Yeah.
Um, just looking at the map. The Town of Oxford Public Hearing. Rebecca Allen and Andrew Braun of Eight Prairie Street, apartment four, Grafton, Mass, code one five three six, has applied to the Board of Selectment to obtain a special permit for animals to keep two horses at fifty-eight Old Webster Road in Oxford. Fifty-eight Old Webster Road is currently owned by Beardsley. A public hearing will be held before the Board of Selectment regarding this matter on Tuesday, August eighteenth, two thousand and fifteen, at seven PM in the Selectment's meeting room on the second floor of the Town Hall. Another Oxford Zoning Board of Appeals. Please take notice that a public hearing will be held on Thursday, August twentieth, two thousand and fifteen, at seven fifteen. Oxford Zoning Board of Appeals to consider a variance application of two forty-five Main Realty Street. The applicant requests a variance to allow the relocation of an existing conforming ground sign closer to the road, which does not meet the minimum fifteen feet, fifteen feet front yard setback requirement. Notice of the Zoning Board of Appeals, July sixteenth, two thousand and fifteen. Russell Baker of Signs by Russ on behalf of Dollar Tree. Oxford Crossing LLC, one hundred and three to one hundred and twenty-one Sutton Ave, um, to allow the Dollar Tree wall sign not to exceed one hundred and sixty-five square feet. Action taken, special permit was granted. The Town of Southwich Planning Board, Special Permit granting authority, will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, September second, two thousand and fifteen. The purpose of the public hearing is to consider a request to keep livestock by Kay White and A and A of Hummus. Everybody wants animals in their backyard?
Yeah.
Oxford Zoning Board of Appeals will have a public hearing on August twentieth to consider a special permit. The applicant requests a special permit to allow the existing public pre-existing, non-conforming use to allow for outside groups, organization, and private parties to rent a lot camp facility. Storage Plan Board, Public Hearing will be held on Tuesday, September eighth, two thousand and fifteen. The applicant requests a site plan approval as required by Chapter twenty-four to allow the demolition of the structure and the construction of a new eleven thousand eight hundred seventy square foot building with a one thousand six hundred and seventeen square foot storage mezzanine for use as a CVS pharmacy and relative site improvements at three sixty-five Main Street. A by right shared parking agreement in an above of property owner's Sturbridge Host Hotel has been reached pursuant to the provisions of Chapter twenty. And we have some, uh, site visit reports from Graves Engineering. Um, one is on the Barkwood End, the building's expansion. Um...
Paul, guys.
It is Graves Engineering's first site visit for preconstruction meeting held July thirteenth, two thousand and fifteen. Upon arrival, Graves Engineering met with the workers. Uh, no workers from Casella Construction Corporation was present at the time of our site visit. Um, there's some correspondence here, some pitches. Any, any comments from...
Just that I know it's going very well. If you drive by there, you see some major activity.
Mm-hmm.
And that will double the size of the facility.
Great. Some more correspondence from Graves Engineering in regards to Curtis Hill, uh, GM Solar Facility, preconstruction meeting. Um... Just another one from fifty-three City Depot Road, the GM Solar Facility. It's just another preconstruction meeting, two of them. And the other one is just for Barkwood End, another preconstruction meeting. Graves has made some comments here, and really it is...
Yeah. They're all routine.
Yeah.
You know, everything's going well on those projects. A lot of activity up there.
Okay, that does bills and correspondence. Um, zoning bylaw, zoning map revision now?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, that I will update you on of the five petitions that you're all aware of that are heading to town meeting. Two of them that you've been directly either sponsoring or working on, and three that you've just worked with the people who are initiating them. I submitted at your direction, first, the petition request last week from the board, from the chairman to the select board chairman, the routine submittal for the Villas District expansion. And two in that direction, this is what went in, and three in this direction, Jane, Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Dredlock. It summarizes it. Everybody has bought in. If you remember, when we met with different people in the past year on the Village Center planning process, a lot of the people who were interested in expanding weren't sure if they wanted to go in in the fall or the spring. And you talked with this board's idea that, well, we can always do two phases. No problem. We'll go with whatever schedule. And the folks from Overlook who met with you, um, this past winter and spring, really thought that they'd be on for the May two thousand and sixteen. Well, um, their per point person handling it called me about two weeks ago, three weeks ago, and said, we've had our board meeting and we really feel comfortable and it's a positive thing. So we've decided for all of our property, we want to go into the hall. So what's included here is the cover sheet summarizes for the reader just the overall project. And the third sheet is the actual warrant article that lists eighteen properties among them. And I'd like to give you each a copy for yourself of the map and just quickly summarize the map for you. So Matt Franz over at CMRPC did a map for you. You're very welcome. And if I can briefly describe it. The, the purple is the existing village district that's already on the books. And you'll notice that below Mugget Hill Road on the right of the east was your last expansion that took you through the cemetery down to Ken LeBlanc's property. And by the way, Burton Engineering is actively putting together his site plan to come into you for that mixed-use property development down there. So that's in the works and it's still moving forward. The violet is everything that you've been working on out of your village district study with those people. So first, if you look to the right, um, the thirty-five, D five and six pieces are the Miller family's property. They own the third piece, a small piece, that turned out to already be in the village district. So that's not included in this. Then if you look to the top center, thirty-four A one is Saint Joseph's Church. And if you remember, Rich K. R. from the EDC was your point person to work with myself. And we met with Father Bob. He took it back to the church, whatever board they work with. And they definitely want to be in, so they're in. And thirty-five A one is a two acre site, roughly two acres, owned by a gentleman, Mr. Vaughn. And he had learned from Father Bob about it. And he contacted me in the past month. And he said, you know, I'm about to put that property on the market. And I'd rather have village district than just residential to open opportunities. And it fits in with everything. And then you go to the left and all of that is the overlook. Of the, uh, one, two, three. They're assembled roughly about eight parcel numbers, map block and lot. But that's all the overlook. The developed part up front, as we've talked before, two of their buildings, three of the buildings, I take it back, have the potential for some really nice village district renovation. And then other property in there that's undeveloped, they could design eventually a nice mixed-use village. Then down in the center, from the church down, those four quick parcels take you down to the Arts and Cultural Center the town owns. Do you remember, Robin Craver had mentioned last year that the selectmen would like that because either they could lease someday to a different tenant that is more village district use oriented, or if the town ever chooses to sell it, it would give you those opportunities too. So that in a nutshell is, is the warrant article to expand on the village district. As you know, it would require a two-thirds vote at town meeting. I scheduled at your direction the public hearing for your next planning board meeting, two weeks from today, advertised in the paper. I do want to reach out to the two homeowners just north of the Arts and Cultural Center, south of the church, and let them know. In Massachusetts, you don't legally require to notify anybody, but this board has always notified anybody who might be affected in an informal manner. So I'd like to talk to them. If they don't want to be part of it, you can amend it and just leave them out. It's not a problem. But just because it made logical sense to include them, because to the north, south, and east, you've got village center, a village district. Why not give them the opportunity? But if they decide to opt out, it's not an issue in terms of continuity for the layout of the zone. That's it in a nutshell. Like I said, you'll have the hearing at your next meeting. And as you already know, because you've all been through it before, you vote an advisory recommendation to the town meeting and present to the town meeting.
It'll be what, September sixteenth?
Yes. Yeah, Wednesday the sixteenth. I do want to thank Matt Franz. I've already thanked him, but I want to just get on the record. He's really, as you know, talented, the GIS mapper at the regional agency. And he did this for us very quickly. There's a lot of work that went into it, a back and forth with him and me for quite a while, adjusting things, changing things, checking things. And as I needed it, he just quickly responded. It was really great.
Good. That's good.
This should have no problem getting to town meetings. This is such a positive thing. Nothing controversial, nothing...
I would hope so.
Yeah. It's a good point.
Alan, there was, um, two correspondence I forgot to read. I placed them off to the side. Do we have a minute?
Sure.
Um, there's going to be a, uh, a training session in the town hall on Tuesday, September twenty-second, two thousand and fifteen. It's going to be, and all town hall employees are required to attend this training. Employees from other departments that have been, that have not been trained are invited to attend. Please mark your calendar. We would like to have all employees trained in protecting themselves should, should the need ever arise. We will be closing the town hall during this event, so it is not to surprise or scare any citizens. They're going to do a, um, an ALICA training, which is alert, lockdown, and enforcement counter and evacuation, um, in the town hall building on Tuesday, September twenty-second.
I know the police chief mentioned a while ago he was setting that up. I think it evolved from a program or funding or something through the police department. It's a commentary in the world, we're living today with violence.
Yep.
Do that type of thing.
And then we do have a calendar for fall town meetings. Um, the week of October nineteenth, there'll be a special town meeting Tuesday, October twentieth, at, uh, two, two thousand and fifteen. I forgot to read those earlier. Thank you.
No problem. Um, I'd like to hold for the fifth one, the Peters one, because Mr. Peters was here before. And I told him that we'd get to it around twenty of. So we can do the other three first.
Okay.
Um, Mike Loin, as you know, is the engineer from Burton Engineering. And he's the point person for the, the next two that they're submitting on behalf of their clients. And I'll pass this one around. He completed, for, for the, the way Massachusetts works, for the annual town meeting in May, you only need about ten signatures to get a citizen's petition in on zoning. But for the fall, for any special town meeting, you need a hundred. So he really had to get out there. And he worked with his clients on this. This one, and I'll flip from the signature page right to the back. And we've talked about this before. This is initiated by Mike on behalf of his client, Ralph Nichols. And you've approved and the shovel ready the special permit a few years ago for the, um, I call the Nichols Sussex, uh, Business Park on Route twenty, just north of the intersection with Route one sixty-nine. And the zoning is BEP, Business Enterprise Park. And they originally envisioned when they, um, wanted to develop it before the economy crashed in two thousand and eight, it would be more of business enterprise park uses, high-tech research, light, light assembly and warehousing office space. But they've had a lot of difficulty over the years trying to get anybody in that category. So what Ralph would like to do, and he'll come to your hearing and present it, what Ralph would really like to do is move the zone line, to change it from BEP to industrial general. Then he would come in and revise the special permit details through a reapplication to you and adjust the lot line layout and the road configuration. So he would move his business from Route one sixty-nine to be the first tenant, build the front of the road, get in there. And he felt by getting it that active, he could get some more interest for other tenants. And by shifting it to industrial general, he could get a wider range of uses. I have no problem as a planner shifting back and forth from BEP to IG or IG to BEP, because we've done it many times over the years in both directions. They, both are industrial zones. And as opportunities arise, or people want to try one or the other, as long as physically it can be worked out and the lot line, the zone line is right next to the property. So that petition came in today officially. And I can put it for you on your October seventh agenda for hearing.
Didn't we just change and land up that way for the McKissits?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that makes sense.
Yep.
Um, the second one is, he's finishing getting his signatures. But I just wanted to brief the board that, um, probably in the next day or two, he'll have the signatures and get it in. Um, this is for two clients combined. And we talked about this before, too. The two clients are Roy Gunter Jr., who handles, thank you, the Gunter property, and Alex Santos. Marked in yellow to the left at the bottom in white at the intersection of Carroll Hill and Route twenty is the CrossFit. And north of it is a lot more land heading north on Carroll Hill that's all marked in yellow that's zoned BEP. Well, Roy has talked to me in the past year, and Alex Santos has started talking the past several months about, they wanted to join together and request a zone change back to residential, because you're getting away from Route twenty. The southern portion of it down on Route twenty is all swamp. You're never going to develop along twenty. You're only going to develop north. And you're getting away from the industrial corridor. You're really getting into the residential neighborhood. And they want to do low-level residential, literally a couple of A and R lots. They're not going to do a subdivision. And they both have talked with each other. They can work with each other to get a couple of lots in. Most likely, it's going to be five acre lots, either reduced frontage or conventional, maybe a common driveway or two. But, you know, it makes common sense to make an adjustment over there and, and let them go more residential as they head north. So that's what that petition is. And I can put that on for October seventh.
Because businesses wouldn't be seen going up that road.
Yeah.
You would, you'd have no visibility.
Yeah.
Correct.
When we did the, the more extensive corridor zoning back then, you don't analyze each piece of wetland. And they discovered a few years later that it was very wet up front near the highway.
Yep.
So...
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, the fourth one, I don't have it here. Um, that's the Casella one. And just to keep you on the loop, David Gold, their attorney, keeps in touch with me. They're putting together their petition. They have the zoning bylaw. They, they went over with you. He did tell me the other day, and I thought I'd just get you on the loop, that by the end of this week, they're going to decide whether they're going to submit for the fall meeting or maybe go for the spring meeting. He said, they've had conversations with some people around town, uh, who have concerns. And they don't know whether they want to move forward for the fall and dialogue with them for concerns, or work and converse with those people fall and winter and then come in in the spring. But I think we'll know by next week one way or the other. There's, there is time to get on for the October seventh meeting for the hearings. Um, he isn't back yet. I'd really like to wait for Mr. Peters to come back for the fifth and final one.
Yeah, fine. Sure.
Yep. But I think we can, I do...
Would you enjoy a babino?
Yes. We can meet with the Babanos.
Sure.
Great. Thank you.
Um, mind coming up and...
Serve a chair.
Grab a chair.
Before we start, can you just show me on this map exactly where you are?
Wow.
This is us.
I thought so, yeah. So that's who it is. And this is the lot.
No, this is the lot.
This is the lot, right here.
That's subdivision. Okay.
This is the empty lot.
Kirk just...
That's the lot.
Great.
A little bit...
I can summarize and correct me if I get anything wrong. Mrs. Babino and I had a really good conversation last week. And the way it went is, the Babino, we'll grab a chair if you'd like to. There's a chair here.
That's all right here.
Okay. Um, there are butters to the Hammond Wood subdivision. And I'll be as brief as possible in background, but to bring everyone up to snuff, um, back in two thousand and two, the board approved the Hammond Wood subdivision. And the developers, with the two gentlemen from Framingham, I forgot their names, but they owned it for years.
David Rock, yeah.
Yeah, David Rock and, and other guys. Yeah. And at the hearing, they requested, as many people do, that the planning board require at some point in the development, there was no particular date, but at some point, a visual protection buffer along their back line. And we can look at it in a few minutes of exactly what we're talking about. Well, Mrs. Babino called me recently that, as you know, the development was sold a few years ago by those gentlemen to, uh, Tim O'Rourke?
Tim Reardon.
Tim Reardon, I'm sorry. Tim Reardon, Dan O'Rourke was the guy who owned it, yeah.
Right.
Tim Reardon from Sturbridge. Tim has been in here before when he first bought it. He came before you. We changed over the legal covenant work to them. He comes in for his annual extension approval, that type of thing. He has a... He has a handful of houses that have been going up there, the road was all put in by the previous gentleman, and it's one of those subdivisions that are active. Well, they were trying to contact him over that condition, asking if they could talk to him about when it would be put in and such. And Mrs. Babino informed me that they'd left some calls and they hadn't heard back from him. So at the, in that conversation, I said, would you like me to call? It's a planning board item, and she said, hold off, I don't want him to think that I'm complaining to the board, I'm trying to be a good neighbor. We'd like to try again and see if we can do it. So I said, mention, you know, that you've talked to me and all. And then she called me back last week and said that, and you can correct the language, I'm just summarizing in general, that he said he didn't plan on doing it, and if he was pursued on that in any manner, he'd get his lawyer involved, and that was the end of the conversation. So she said, what do I do? And I said, well, that's a serious matter. I said, what I suggest is you come into tonight's planning board meeting, meet with the board, we go over it, and I'd recommend, out of initially hearing and seeing what we're looking for and everything, that at the next meeting, which I guess would be two weeks from tonight, we invite the Babanos back along with Mr. Reardon, and finalize a schedule and specifics. One last thing I'd like to say is, often these days, the past few years, you get very specific in your condition. A condition might say, a row of abaydi, four feet, off-center, six-foot-high, eight of them. Or I might say a six-foot-high vinyl fence. Well, back in two thousand and two, it was just left open on specifics. The condition just says, a visual buffer along the property line. Well, in terms of how do you make that happen, it's completely the board's authority. I think the most productive way would be for Mr. Reardon to come back in with these folk at the next meeting, and hear what you're looking for, hear what his feeling is pro or con, and hopefully it's all workable, and everyone's working together for mutual benefit. And ultimately, the board makes the final decision on the specifics, and then you would vote that night for the specifics of what it is in terms of whether it's fencing or vegetative buffering, or combination, and a schedule. I think it makes perfect sense of the timing of you requesting now. It's not at the very end of the project, and it's not at the very beginning, there's enough houses. The building commissioner told me that between a couple of them that are occupied and a couple of them being built, there are seven building permits issued for, and they're in various stages, so it's far enough along that it's time to finalize this and work out the implementation. Feel free to ask the board anything or go over, but I'd like to just hand out, and Kurt highlighted the wrong sheet for me, you can just explain to the board which one it is.
It's the straight one right next to it.
So what number is it? Which number, can you read off the number?
Three, seven, eight, one, four, point, one, number thirteen.
Oh, so that pink, the pink roof is your house.
Yeah. You know, looking back at this, where this lot is, this lot's a lot higher than our property. Even if they put twelve-foot trees in, it really wouldn't make much difference. You know, unless they were to build it up, you know, but that's, it sounds a little unreasonable, because it might have been lower.
When they put in that road, there was quite a bit of blasting that went on to bring the road down, because in the beginning, the road was up level, and the visual of the lights going up the road was of consideration too.
Right, right.
So they blasted down and brought the road down a good, probably, I don't know, ten feet or so.
So what are you looking for from point to point? If you could literally mark on here, we, the location, and I could pass it around to show the board.
This is actually the lot they're building right now, and this is where we'd like, we'd like to put something here. But originally with Dan, Mr. Dan Rock and Hayes, in a conversation on the hall, he said, we'll give you this strip of property.
That can't get involved in this.
No, in lieu of planting, but that's hearsay too.
The only legal requirement of the board is that one condition of visual buffer.
Okay.
That would still be between you and the current owner, whether you can work it out.
Because they'd have to put twenty-foot trees in.
Well, we can't require that either, because, see, the board can require a certain level of buffering.
And I don't expect them to do that.
For instance, you mentioned earlier that your initial concern was the, the lights. So that level, but the board doesn't have the authority in Massachusetts to go extensive to block from anyone seeing anything. It's more in terms of blocking at standing level, ground level, either lights or just visual.
Okay.
That type of thing. So in that respect, do you still want something? Do you feel that doing something would, would matter?
Well, we'd like to meet with them, you know.
Our, our other thought is, be, that being said, what the other people has suggested to us, we would still be open for that. I mean, if he says, you know, geez, I don't want to, I don't want to put trees up from where that lot ends up to the end, it's going to be too expensive for me, I don't want to do that, well, maybe we're thinking, you know, we're not hard people to get along with. Well, why don't you just give us this piece right here? There's a couple of trees on there that are, that are big, that are at the edge of the property, that could potentially fall on our wires. Cut the trees, give us the space.
Because there's also, there's, there's a bunch of...
And we'll leave you alone.
Pretty good-sized trees here, saplings, and if they were to cut some big pines here, that would actually grow, they're already about twenty, twenty-five feet tall. You know, that are on our property. You know, if we cut the pines, maybe that would grow high enough to give us, and it wouldn't be very costly to him.
I'm just concerned when you convey to me that someone said, I'm not going to cooperate in whatever way they describe it, and it is a requirement.
He says, everybody's after my money.
And that's why I feel that it, it would be most productive for everybody that the developer and you come back to the next board meeting, and that I'd request that the board have me send a letter to him tomorrow inviting him to your next meeting to discuss the, this requirement as noted, and I can attach the decision to remind him and highlight in yellow that particular addition.
Is there a section, was it thirty, thirty-seven, eight?
It's the, see the blue piece that's highlighted?
Yeah.
There's straight piece right beside it, toward the road that's going up.
Pink roof is their house.
Yeah.
But that whole section is our lot. Now, if you look beyond that toward the road, going up, there's a small piece up at the top.
Yep, that's the piece you're going to get them on.
That's the building property, and then there's the empty one that's below, that's not big enough for them to build on.
Yep.
And the original people...
This one is a potential house lot, this is the lot that they said is not buildable, and they're wondering if he maybe work out transferring it to them, but that would be...
Yeah, and the original people had given us a curb cut.
Well, actually, there's an island here, and he put a cut in here, because originally if we said, my son was looking for a house, we had to have a building lot in the front, and he, we could put a road, driveway in here. So he put a little relief in here in the island.
The previous developer, the common one.
Yeah, and I know that doesn't have anything to do with, with these people, I understand that, but he doesn't want to spend any money. We're thinking, well, we can negotiate a little something, keep everybody happy, because, you know...
What would you say the distance from the proposed road to the property line is?
Our property line?
It's about twenty.
Fifteen feet, twenty feet?
Maybe twenty feet. That's not a very wide strip of property, it's probably...
Well, you were up there not long ago.
Yeah, he is aware of it.
It's from the sign to our driveway, their border is right at the edge of our driveway.
Twenty-four feet or something. It's kind of useless to him, but would be an advantage to us.
Yeah, and then if, if you, if you just drop those two pine trees that are about thirty feet tall, opening up the space so that our trees could grow, and we could just create our own privacy back there, possibly.
You feel if a couple of trees came down, your own would grow in and block?
Yes.
Yeah, and it's a couple of really huge, white pines.
Couple of trees.
Plus our house is passive solar, so it interferes with that.
That's an interesting way to create a buffer, cutting down some to allow your buffer to just naturally grow.
Because a huge pine, I mean, like this figure pine tree, so we can have the other stuff grow. You know, maybe it's something we should text them our thoughts and see what he, how he responds.
Can we request in that letter that they actually need and come to us with a proposed or...
Well, I'm concerned when, when someone tells me, and when someone tells me that they tried, didn't hear back four times, and then he just said, I'm not doing it, you know, my lawyer, we're getting involved. And this is a planning board condition, so I think it makes more sense of they come into a planning board meeting and talk with the board that enforces it, and try to work something out to everyone's advantage.
Because I know Mr. Holgren had said at that meeting that X amount of funds were going to be put aside for this. That's what he had said.
Yeah, it doesn't work that way. Yeah, it's, it's not part of the performance guarantee on a, a visual buffer on a subdivision. He's probably thinking that industrial, commercial, because lots of different Massachusetts with different types of land is, industrial, commercial buffers often have a performance guarantee before the company gets its certificate of operation. But subdivision performance guarantees are more for roadwork and drainage, so I've never seen a planning board put that type of thing aside. What you do is, prior to completion at a logical point, you require it, and if there's a lack of cooperation, they can't move forward for further building permits.
Which is exactly where we are.
I think it's, it's best for everybody to sit down for a few minutes at a board meeting. The party who's looking for it, the party that's required to do it, and the party that administers it, all three entities, and go over it and finalize it at the next board meeting.
So what do we need to bring to the next board meeting? Do we need to bring anything specific to the next pictures or anything?
Just show up, just show up.
Okay, we'll be here.
Alan, because of that lot size, it's not a buildable house lot. Does that property get diverted back to the town someday, or does he pay taxes on it?
Well, it's interesting, on, on that particular one, the ownership currently is the developer.
Yep.
It's not a piece of designed open space, and a lot of times when those pop up in these little subdivisions, either a developer, I've seen it across the board, a couple of things, either they sell or give it to an abater when they're done, or they just walk away from it, and it ends up in tax title owned by the town, and then the town someday, or the city, depending on the community, down the line, the town treasurer or the city treasurer at some point adds it to the inventory of town-owned tax title property. And the years go by, and it either sits there, or they add it to a program to offer at a nominal price to a butchers to buy it, you know. So it's up to him whether he wants to someday do something when he's done, or to walk away from it, it ends up with the treasury. It's one of those pieces.
So I have a question. If, if we were to acquire that piece of property, could we someday open up our driveway onto their road, so it would essentially change our address and build a house down on that other lot?
I don't think you've got enough room to bu, build a house, because he doesn't have room to bu, build a house.
No, but, no, but what I'm, but what I'm saying, yes. You know, if you took that, imagine every line that's there.
It doesn't look like it from eyeballing it. You would have to go to a civil engineer such as Mr. Loin, who just stepped out in the hall, to run the actual civil engineering calculations on square footage, but eyeballing it,
Not that we want.
I don't see enough room there for you to be able to do, put in the second unit. But I confirm it with someone like a civil engineer, but adding a driveway out there is certainly possible. I know nothing about addresses, you'd have to talk to the, the building commissioner on whether you can change a mailing address or not.
No, no, I'm just thinking of the address.
Physical driveway is certainly feasible. I highly doubt, but you'd have to talk to someone like, like Mike Loin on whether there's square footage to put a second house if you combine your current property with that, but it doesn't look like it. But again, I'm not definitive.
So assuming, assuming that he does say, I just have that property, what happens? Do we have, like, some kind of documentation?
On what?
Have a survey, probably.
This, this. Say he, he decides, I don't want to do the buffer, but I'll do this, this hunk of land, this empty hunk of land that's not worth anything to me. How does that flip over to us?
You'd have to talk with him on, I don't know, that's, that's a private transaction between parties. Get advice from your own attorney, real estate attorney, on how you can handle it.
All right.
Hi.
Some more questions?
Hi, thank you for coming in.
See you in two weeks.
Yeah.
I'll let you know what time it's on.
It's a month, isn't it, August, October, you said?
No, it's two weeks from tonight, which would be September twenty-first.
Oh, originally you said October sixth, I think.
I was probably talking about, I think it's sixteen.
Sixteen.
September sixteen. I'm sorry, September sixteen.
September sixteen.
It's the first and third, first and third, my fault.
Okay, terrific.
Thank you.
Yes.
Not really, I mean, the board just tells me to write a letter tomorrow and inform him. We drop it in the mail, and then hopefully I'll hear back from him.
Great, thank you so much.
I'm just concerned when someone says, you know, I'm not doing something, and I can get my attorney involved, and it's a condition of approval, and I think it's best for him to sit down and work it out.
Yeah.
Mr. Peters is here.
Yes.
This is the fifth and final zoning warrant article for, for the fall town meeting, and Mike has been working with you, as you know. And similar to the village handout, the same type of handout for everyone, one for you, Mike, and two to hand down. One for you, Jane, and the two to hand down. This is the planning board submitted warrant article last week, because we've been working in partnership with you, and your lawyer and I have gone over it all, he, you know, nothing's changed. What it is, first it summarizes that, you know, and I'll be brief, that Mike came to the planning board after submitting a petition for the last town meeting to change the accessory use footnoteing section of the bylaw to allow constructing in a residential zone, if you live on the property, a large commercial garage for your own truck. And it wasn't the right place to put it in the bylaw. You just submitted it on your own, so just refresh everyone's memory. We met around that time with Mike and his attorney, and everyone agreed that they indefinitely postponed that one, and we worked together to put something in the right manner in the bylaw for the October town meeting. So this is what you reviewed at your last planning board meeting. I made the changes that the board directed me to before submitting it. That the main change is, if you flip to the third page, item B C. Originally, Mike had proposed a one-hundred-foot setback, which is B V, from the property line for the commercial garage. And the board on your own came up with the concept of, that's great, but maybe in other instances, you want to allow a little less setback requirement. So C says, as you've done in a couple other sections of the zoning bylaw, like the P, BEP zone, upon written request of the applicant, the planning board could reduce the setback from the hundred down to no less than fifty feet for front, rear, and or side property lines, if you find that such waiver or modification is consistent with the requirements of this section and the site plan review section, because they're coming in for site plan review. That's the only change you requested. And again, to summarize, the way Mike had proposed it, it's only for the agricultural zone. You need at least eight acres of land that you have your residence on it, and you put your commercial garage, you come in for site plan, and it would go through the standard site plan review. And then on the last page is the criteria that the board finalized. What does the board actually look at to make sure it's okay in the site plan review for this type of thing? Due regard for accessory of an emergency vehicle, in case police, fire, and T have to respond and get to the garage or get around it. Driveway and turnaround design that works for the large vehicle getting in and out. Access, screening, parking, loading, and just general intent and use. So the board, I've scheduled the board's public hearing on this for two weeks from tonight at the next planning board meeting, September sixteenth.
What is screening?
Screening would be case by case, the board looks at screening in any project. Whether there's an abater really nearby, that it makes sense to require a fence or some shrubbery for that abater. But you've described that you don't seem to be in that situation, you're kind of isolated. But the board's putting something like this together, hypothetical for anyone in the future as they come in. So you might get one someday that the abater is just fifty feet away and says, you know, I really like a fence, and it makes sense, or a row of abaydi, something like that.
Now, Mike's not going to have to go get any signatures for this.
No, the board agreed to submit this, which I did, because you really, he let you take the lead, because he was cooperative in working with you. That way you didn't need the hundred signatures from a private petitioner for the special town meeting. The special, yeah.
I had enough trouble meeting twelve, I don't like not going to give it.
You know what a lot of communities are doing, particularly in the Blackstone Valley? They've had enough of this, and what's spreading across the state is, they adopt the policy through their select board or city council, that you have two annual meetings, one in the spring and one in the fall. Annuals require only town on zoning, but you have to pick a particular day, like, the, the annual in the spring is like the second Tuesday in May or something. You've got to set the fall one for the same type of thing, the, say, the second Tuesday in October. But they've always kept it floating so the town accountants can finalize with the State Department of Revenue free cash, which is the main goal of that meeting. So I think if you requested it, they probably wouldn't do it, but it certainly would get us out of this one-hundred signature nightmare. Most communities don't last. Maybe someone can suggest it. I mean, there's a certain person here who's working for two weeks to get us under signatures. It's just really annoying, and it makes sense for a special, but if you've got year after year, a fall one, is it really a special? Why not set a particular... Why not set a particular day and do it? Just a suggestion. It is spreading, I've heard, across the state pretty quickly.
So we have to make a motion to accept a public hearing?
You already did. Everything's been said. It's just going over with Mike if you had any questions this evening, and just updating the board by giving them the summary and the actual final wording, with the final references they added at the last meeting. I know you told me you talked with a few neighbors just to update the board on their feelings on the project.
I don't find anybody against anything. I'm pretty isolated. You can only see one neighbor. And all I can see is the roof of his house. I got a railroad on one side, I got conservation land behind me. And I think the only neighbor I got that borders me is to my east. I don't even know where he is.
Where was this address located?
Three ninety-one St.
Right by the bridge there, after Hammond Hill, behind the boards, Boston.
Yep.
On the left.
Oh, okay.
Right, Smith Road.
Yep, okay.
Right?
Right in the corner, Smith Road, yeah.
Okay. All right.
At town, at town meeting, I'll need two thirds of vote. I don't know, fifty percent.
Who votes?
Yes, anyone who attends.
Alan, one thing, did anybody make sure Smith Road was in the north side historic district?
Smith Road.
Yeah, it's north side historic district, and how does it affect this?
Well, the historic district, it would be interesting if where he's locating the specific garage, that's a good point. If, when you, let's hope it goes through. If it goes through, then you want to move into actually proposing a plan. If you locate the actual garage within the historic district overlay, you would be required to go before them if any part of the building can be seen from a roadway. So let's assume it probably would, right? Then, besides planning with site plan review, before you get a building permit, you have to go before the historic district. And they're not deciding whether you can do it or not. They go over the design. Is the architectural design of the building in harmony with the historic district? And I don't know anything about that. You'd have to talk to them. Is your father still a point person for that?
I don't think so. I think somebody else is a point now.
Yeah, that's a good point to just raise for your information. But you may, may or may not be in it, I don't know. It depends where you decide to physically locate the garage when the time comes.
Is that something you'd want to look into over the next week or so, to see if you are in the historical district?
I don't think so.
Is it part of Smith Road?
When I did, when I did Mike Lucio's, it was all, I did all the houses on Smith Road, every one of them was in historic district. Yeah, but I think it started in, if I'm not mistaken, it started right around the bridge or the entrance of Smith Road and went.
Can you look at, with him, for one minute on the map, because you know it very well. Mike, if you may just look at it.
He might be, no, he's gonna be fine. You're probably right here. Here's Stafford, here's Smith Road. Yep, it starts right after him, just after, so it's not him, but it's pretty much within two hundred feet of him. It's a good thing. Close call. That's a close call right there.
Any board members have any changes or what Alan bashed it up for us?
So you understand that two thirds, it's, these meetings aren't very populated? So if you have people that are supporting your town board, I could invite them to come too.
Encourage them to come, Mike.
Yeah.
I know, truck driver.
That's right.
They live in town.
That's a question I have. The way I interpret, the way you wrote it, right now, there's no law in town governing truck park, no law for it or against it. This, by a turbo right, makes it illegal to have one in a residential zone.
No, this governs the garage only. This doesn't get into vehicular management at all. If you want to build a garage to park a commercial, this is all about the garage. It's got nothing to do with whether you can have any type of vehicle on a piece of property or not. That's governed by other things and other regulations. This is all, this is all about the garage, the intent of the garage itself.
It doesn't address it, no. The way I read it.
I don't know what you mean by that. I think you're misinterpreting something. What would like to point to it?
Well, section B A, garaging commercial motor vehicle on residential property should only be allowed in agricultural, not less than eighty.
Right, the garage. It's not saying that you can only park, you can't park the vehicle in other places. Garaging is a garage, it says for permitting proposed commercial vehicle garage structures. That's what this is all about, strictly the structure of the garage. It's not positive or negative promoting or prohibiting actual vehicle storage anywhere in town. Vehicle parking on property, it's got nothing to do with it. I'm glad you brought it up, in case somebody asks at town meeting, that's how we answer it, too.
Well, in that case, let's say you got a prover and all, down the road, you're gonna get in trouble someday, because I'm parking the truck there.
I don't see why.
No, you shouldn't. Absolutely not.
The reason I keep asking is because that's, that's why I got.
Yeah, you got tuned up on your last property, you bought it, right?
Yeah, and it caused a lot of stuff.
Yeah, no, I agree, yeah.
Evening, Al.
So, that's it. Great, so you're, I see you have a public hearing. I'll send you the notice, just your own information, and send it to your attorney, but it'll be scheduled for, well, already it's, it's two weeks from tonight.
All right.
Sixteen.
You're on for the sixteenth. Just to summarize of the five you just went over, the village district and yours are on for September sixteenth. The other three will be on for October seventh.
Do you think we're gonna need some bear to public?
So the one and two weeks, is that what it's voted on?
No, no.
No.
No, that's when the planning board, under state law, has to hold an advisory public hearing in which they vote their recommendation to town meeting, and they present it at town meeting, and it's strictly the board's opinion. Only the town meeting approves or denies presumption. It's a step, it's a two-step process.
You need me back for that one, right?
Yeah.
All right. And then, that was all right.
Thanks, Mike.
That is a week.
Yep.
Week one is next for Pownik.
Hey.
Mr. Loin.
P and O seven forty, Pownik in subdivision review discussion.
Yep, to give you an update on that, I talked to Mike Mallard today, and I guess, as you know, the original Highcrest Road, when it came in, right here.
That's on the other page. That's on the other page.
And when it came in off the deer run, there was this the lane that was supposed to come around. When they came and built these lots out on phase one, they just dug into the banking, real, I mean, it's gotta be twenty foot banking here. About, I'd say, eight, ten years ago, there was an issue out there. We came up with a temporary sedimentation basin with an overflow pipe that went to a cash basin. Over the years, I think with just age and snow plowing, removal, and everything else, the pipes been dislodged, the banking needs some repair, the sedimentation basin needs cleaning out, and then the temporary fence around the top of the hillside is deteriorated and needs repair also. Talked to Mike Mallard today, he was gonna talk to the contractor that I guess he has on board to, looking at this next phase of doing some of the remedial work. And he said within the next two weeks, he forwarded Mike Andrean's letter to that contractor. I'm gonna meet them out there probably beginning of this coming week. He said he was gonna set up a meeting, and we'll get all his comments addressed within the next couple of weeks. And I guess I'm gonna be here in the next, in two weeks anyway, and I guess I can give you an update on the status of it then.
Because of the embankment being as steep as it is, and there was a temporary fence up there, are they looking to put something more permanent that won't deteriorate?
That's one thing we'll have a discussion on, on that. Yeah, I mean, it's, well, I think when we walk out there, we're gonna have to make, make that. I haven't been out there in, I, I mean, I drove up to the edge here, but I haven't been up into the top or by the banking in probably six, eight years. So when we go out there Monday, I'll make sure we look at it and see if there's something that could be a little bit more so, we don't have to worry about it. I mean, I'd ultimately love it down the road that they come across and decide that, hey, we're not gonna end up building this section of road and just come in there and come up with a solution of maybe just putting a cul-de-sac here and working out and just finishing that section off complete. I'd love to come back to the board on that, and I think that's, might be the ultimate goal. But at this point, it's more so stabilizing where the, where the original contractor left, left off, left it.
A couple of quick things. One, thank you for jumping on this, because Jerry Foskett, the highway superintendent, came to me. That's what triggered us asking you to come in, that it's created some real problems out there by being deteriorated.
Yeah.
So hopefully, if you come back in two weeks and we revisit it, you've made progress in getting that in the short term. In the long term, what you just said, when Mike Mallard was hearing you, when the bank first took it over, and the coming winter will be the fourth winter, that it just hasn't moved forward into the revision. I know the idea was exactly what you said. It's just too steep to punch that road through at all. So the idea is that eventually you're gonna come back, and you're gonna, they'll probably lose a lot, at least one lot. They'll come in and propose a revision to the definitive plan that will dead-end here with a turnaround, and you just won't have road there, and you'll just permanently adjust the erosion sedimentation there. I'm just concerned that, I really think it's time this winter to come in. It's been a long time. And Jerry's concerned too, about year after year, if it stays like this. We're entering the fourth year, to be frank with you. It's time for the revision to move forward before the board in the upcoming winter. I really feel that one.
I, I can't agree more. If you could just, I'm sure Mike Mallard's gonna need something to send up the ladder to. So if we can, sure, maybe your board can send a letter and request that, that would probably help the ladder. Wrongs give bills quicker.
Sure. Have Alan Smith some type of letter saying that it's been going on for a, for your project.
Yeah, time to put a permanent resolution to it.
Yeah, and we can give them, you know, the upcoming winter, it can be stated that way in the letter, that, you know, during the winter planning board season, if you can submit the revision. And they could come in and meet first informally,
Yeah.
and then go over it, and then come back in the short term after that and formally submit if they want to bounce it off of the board. There's nothing wrong with that, but it, it's time to get it out of limbo over there.
Well, you figure, they've had it for four years, somebody's had it before that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, I, I gotta tell you, it's probably eight, ten years ago that I was out to that, created that.
Can you update the board, if you know, where it is on the phase three road reconstruction for Highcrest, where that stands these days?
Your, you know what, I was trying to get that out of Mike today. He told me that he does have a contractor on board that's supposed to be going with all the revisions and everything that we came to your board to get this phase three under construction. Mike was running out to a meeting when I did get ahold of him. I would, I'll get that information for you, to be able to update that too. Or you could also put that in your letter, ask for a status of your.
Yeah, go ahead, keep it separate, no?
Keep it separate.
Separate, okay.
Because a year ago, he did tell us just verbally that the bank board did authorize the funding to do it.
They, they did, and then they started, then there was a buyer that was gonna come in and buy it, and then that fell through, and another, it's, it's, and that, I think what happened is this, this lawsuit, this lawsuit from this abutter tied everything up.
That's been settled, right?
It's been settled.
Because the stuff that's in pink is probably only about, maybe three house lots left.
Yeah, if that.
If that.
Yeah.
So that, that one's probably running and.
I'll, I'll come up, I'll come, give you an update on the status of phase three.
You think Mike might be able to join in two weeks, possibly?
I'll ask him, I'll ask him to.
Okay. Any other questions on Pownik and Hill subdivision?
Nope.
Other than giving Alan.
Yeah, a couple of letters.
Of Alan's, and probably some of the things about making a final decision.
Sounds good.
Okay.
I don't think you have anything else to add.
Uh, no, we already went over the two petitions that you, you're working on.
Don't go there. Don't go there. I gotta just tell you, more people, the people that live in Charlton don't work in Charlton. I've hit every business on Route twenty over the last forty-eight hours. So.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks.
Sure. Russ is here for two items. The first one is Jennings Road's extension, annual subdivision approval extension request. And he made the request for the annual extension, which would be to September fifteenth, two thousand sixteen. I'd recommend it, it's routine. Do you want to update the board anything about the subdivision, where you are these days?
We're very close to getting it turned over and accepted. There's some comments that have gone back and forth with the engineers, and we're about to resubmit the response to the last round of questions.
This is at the end of Jennings?
Jennings Road, phase one.
Okay.
I'm just curious if you could just tell us.
How many houses are up there these days?
Just seeing them.
Uh, there are seven.
Seven houses. So you're asking for an extension to?
Uh, the annual approval, yes, just to continue.
Do you have a motion to send it?
Second.
And the date again is?
September fifteenth, two thousand sixteen. Alan, hey.
Hi. I don't do subdivisions. I don't do subdivisions.
Is this an open space one, cluster?
Yes.
You can, you're on it, it's a special permit. There you go. Just wasn't sure. The other item, under growth management, Russ and I had a discussion the other day and then this morning on a zoning revision idea pertaining to setbacks regarding motocross and such. So why don't I let Russ explain first, and then I can jump into the conversation with the board.
Sure. Give you guys a little history on what I'm here. And I'm not here this evening representing Sunset City, I'm just here to record. This goes back to conversations I've had with David since I've throughout the process of our site plan review. David was very concerned, as I am, about setbacks off residences for motorsports and being a permitted motorsports facility, not just someone riding their bikes in their backyard or for natural wants to mess around with those rules and regulations for them. But David and I were both very concerned. Our project has great offsets, as we've announced. Currently, as the way of zoning, we've finished the zoning, there's really nothing in zoning that would prevent a motorsports facility from coming right on someone's property with no offset distance. And, you know, the way some of them might get around that is to say, I'm going to build a parking lot over here where I would charge people to park, and then put my motocross facility over there in the corner next to a couple houses. And nobody's paying to ride the motors, motorsports area. They're just paying to park. So all my buddies are paying to park, but they're coming to ride over there. So now Carl is right over there, doesn't make a problem with that, because there's no offset distance. So David and I both agreed, David wished that he could have been here this evening, but he's working. He'd like to participate and it will help. He shut it up to several other people, see who shows up to put a feedback. If we come up with something reasonable so that it doesn't wind up in signs right on someone's property. So that's what I'm here for.
We talked technical a little bit, and just knee-jerk brainstorming, talking very short term. And one thought that I have that maybe I'd recommend differently, but at the moment, I think it makes sense of how do you deal with in the bylaw? You've got on page twenty-five, section three two four intensity of use schedule, and you list each of the zones out, and there's columns of setbacks. There's minimum front yard setback per zone, which is generic for any use in the zone. There's minimum side yard and minimum rear. Then we have footnotes, and various footnotes address different things, like saying, but for this specific thing, you do it a little differently. For instance, side and rear yards on a zone line for certain types of zones are farther. If a residential zone is near an industrial, the footnote goes double or triple for the setback. So one thought I had in just our very quick chat this morning is, maybe the idea of doing it is to propose a new footnote in that section. that says something along the lines of language that conveys, uh, for a proposed, um, and it references the way we describe it in the use table. We don't say motorsports, we say private for-profit recreation. In a private for-profit recreation, the planning board in the site plan interview can require a setback from the nearest residence up to the following distance, and the distance you're looking for, you plug that number into that new footnote. And that's how you deal with it. So hypothetically down the line, if someone comes forward with something eight years from now, you say, well, under that footback, during the site plan interview, the planning board assures that it's at least a certain number of feet. Other times you also, like you did with Mr. Peters earlier, um, you have a certain amount, but you may give yourselves the authority through site plan to reduce it if it makes more sense in a particular case. That's another way. So there's a couple of ways, but I think the right place to put it sitting here today is heading for that footnote section in the intensity of use schedule. It's probably simplest routine and accomplishes something, but it's a question of maybe coming back to the board over the winter and getting specific on language and just brainstorming the details of it. Is that what you have?
Yeah, and I look at tonight as just a, you know, get the ball rolling and, you know, throw it out there and see what everyone's thoughts are on it.
So you would you would have to make that a good setback.
Yeah.
From profit, I mean, you'd have to have a large truck landing.
Correct.
Make sure that you didn't affect them.
Yeah, it's gonna limit where you can put it by a lot.
Well, see, that's another issue to brainstorm. If you flip to the use table, where does it come in in uses in the bylaw? We don't have a motorsports land use. We have other recreational facilities governed for gainful profit, including indoor and outdoor theaters, physical fitness centers, health clubs, indoor and outdoor tennis, and racquetball facilities. That's where the motocross comes under. So you really, for anything under that, you're going to create a potential footnote setback type of thing.
You need a specific use.
So maybe, if you wanna do that, it's gonna complicate your proposal even more. You could do that, you get into more detail, and you'll have a lot of confrontation among pro and con of how do you define motocross and put it in? But a simple way to evolve it would be to just reference the other, this what I just read, the other recreational umbrella land use and probably propose a significant setback with a caveat that the planning board can go like you did from a hundred feet to fifty with Mr. Peters, from X feet to X. So the smaller ones that are non-motosports can be reduced on site plan.
Right, if someone's doing tennis.
Exactly.
I mean, we're not gonna say, you know, you you gotta do.
Yeah.
Two miles.
If you go the root of saying, well, why don't we just create a new line item called motorsports, here we go on a big war of people who don't want motorsports are gonna oppose you completely, saying, well, we wanna kill motorsports. If you're just trying to create a performance standard, I think the simplest way would be under the other recreational for-profit. Otherwise you become, you they would generate from what we learned from Sunset City's public input, you'd be generating people saying, well, if we kill this new motorsports line entirely, then we prevent those in the future. And your intent is just to create some performance standards and it'll drown in that opposition. That's my opinion, I just, what's worse, you know?
Alan, is any new, like, motocross use subject to site plan?
Yes, and that's.
So then you do like a noise study anyways, right?
Yes.
And that's that's sort of like your de facto setbacks almost.
Well, that's another good point. Uh, I mean, there's many ways of chewing this over. You write that right now, if someone says, well, you don't have anything right now. Um, you've been dealing with it through applicants cooperating with you, doing a noise study and showing that, you know, here's the distance well beyond anything you create. But there is the hypothetical, like Russ mentioned, of what if down the line someone comes in with something that they're not proposing it at a location like the one he proposed? What if it is tighter and they're saying, yep, but your bylaw says I can do it and I'm pushing it through?
Then eventually somebody gets a complaint about some noise and DP comes in and shuts it down.
Yeah. It really doesn't definitively, any setback for any use, no matter what you're talking about in any community's setback bylaw, it doesn't really, um, impact noise one way or the other. It 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 really impacts more of just physical distance, comfort factor of people nearby. The noise issue is gonna raise its head for better or for worse through other pieces of the review. But it certainly is a valid concern and and, um, no problem with what you're trying to achieve, it's just doing it in a manner that works out to get approved.
Yeah, I think it needs a lot of thought and and discussion.
Come up with a minimum, you know, requirement and then work on that.
Wanna come back because in the winter and.
Sure, no, absolutely.
Your goal is probably to head for the Maytown meeting?
Oh, yeah. Yep, that would be great.
It's gonna take a lot of planning, take a lot of wording.
Oh, yeah. We're gonna rely heavily on Alan as usual.
I think part of it is is it's not lengthy, it's just what you wanna put into it. It's not like you're writing pages, you're it's, but I agree with the chairman that, you know, it it's an extensive discussion, it really is. But what you then come up with isn't the be all and do all, but it certainly makes sense and addresses cons- part of the puzzle for the overall concern of this type of development, sure. Nothing wrong with that. Okay, great.
Welcome.
Thank you for future meetings.
All right.
All right. Do you have anything to go with the growth management?
Yeah, uh, very quickly, Mr. Chairman, a couple of the quick items. Um, Jean is out sick this evening, but she would have led and I would have just helped her on two quick things on the Housing Authority partnership. We work with them on affordable housing. Uh, the PATH grants, the contract is signed with the consultant Bill Scanlon and with Mike Andrade, so they'll get rolling soon. And we'll just hear back from them at different stages. They'll come in and meet with you. The Housing Authority funding, um, we're working with Mass Development on that new route for the packaging of that we talked about, the packaging of the finances, and, um, what we're doing right now is they've recommended a consultant from the Leominster area that is a specialist in this type of thing, and the Housing Authority would hire him. And he would put together the proposal, working with us and Mass Development. We're trying to set up a meeting with him. He's incredibly busy and we're just trying to pin him down. He he would like to meet with us. But, uh, we're waiting to hear back from him in the short term, and then we'll, Jean will just update you with my assistance in the future on that. Um, the last thing under growth management, just really brief, our our intern Joe is done. But Joe had done a nice job on that initial some raw research on what Lisa Westwell brought up, uh, as the Assistant Animal Control Officer, that you read a couple of public hearing notices tonight about, you know, in a dense urban neighborhood in a town, like a subdivision, about whether it's a planning board or a ZBA or a select board of a spec- site plan interview or a special permit on animals in these routine homes. It's not like a big piece of land that you see traditionally. More and more people who just live on a regular minimum lot want all types of animals. We're one of the last communities around here that doesn't have it in our zoning in any manner. To refresh your memory, a few years back, you wanted to do something at her request, and, um, Nelson Burlingham at the Board of Health Chairman at the time wasn't comfortable with it for a couple of reasons, and I understand. One was, it wasn't proposed at this level. It was just like many communities, anything of at least five acres or less. Well, a lot of people own three, four, five acres, it's not a problem, and you're making them go through some permitting. He was also concerned that maybe you'd be getting into border health issues, but as you read from those conditions tonight, those were non-border health issues, those were typical planning board setback issues. So Joe Schlegel, our intern, did a little raw research of what other communities around here have on the books for you to look at. And I'll I'll share it in the next few days with Lisa. And you just see, for instance, he looked at Paxton, and Paxton at the bottom of the first page has a special permit requirement in their zones that for livestock horses and poultry on a parcel greater than forty thousand square feet and less than five acres, they need that special permit. The other communities that he looked at all have the same type of thing in one manner or the other. He looked at Paxton, Oxford, Southbridge, Webster, Lester, Brookfield, and Westbrookfield. And they've all, and you can see it's routine in some manner. For instance, in Brookfield, it would be a planning board special permit. And if it's under five acres lot size, you need the planning board special permit. If it's more than five acres, it's allowed by right. I do agree with Nelson's first concern a few years back of, now, you're getting to three, four, five acres. You might wanna talk with Lisa more over the winter about maybe proposing something, and then we reach out to Nelson at the subdivision lot level. It's that type of thing. Someone has forty thousand, sixty thousand. That's where she said, as Animal Control Officer, they get the complaints and the concerns. Houses are really side by side in a in a dense neighborhood, and I think that would address the border health concern. But I think it's worth, if you're interested in, um, dialoguing further with Lisa, and I can reach out to Nelson too and get conversation going and see if it might work for, she was hoping by the Maytown meeting, maybe someone could put together something at that level. So just thought I'd give you his research and see what you think.
Good that we got him to do this, 'cause it's gives us a good.
Oh, yeah.
Feedback.
Based on the powers, yeah.
Instead of us just going out going, what do we do now?
Yeah. It is interesting that everyone is doing the five acre or less, but she made it clear when she first came to us and chatted, you know, a few months back, she said the concern is, you know, minimum lot sizes and subdivisions is where the concern is popping up that people call her. And hypothetically, let's say it was adopted, the type of conditions you read tonight, Mr. Chairman, from one of the abutting towns, making sure it's setback from the lot line of certain amounts, you know, that type of thing is what neighbors would, um, receive assurance from.
Yeah, they, yeah, a couple stipulations about the maneuver being enough.
Manure enough.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's reasonable to.
Yeah, management.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I mean, I get the concern too, because I have three and a half acres. I can't see any of my neighbors at all just because of where I am. And I could probably get, um, some cows and nobody would, I mean, I mean, really.
Sure.
But, like, I would say, do I have to go get a permit to get, yeah, so I I see that in between the under five, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, or if you wanna get, like, three chickens, and you have, like, three acres, that's that's not a big deal.
Yeah, that's reasonable.
Yeah.
But if you have forty thousand square feet and your neighbor says, that's ten feet from my window from the lot line, the planning board could say, well, move it to farther in the backyard, so it's it's away and it works for everyone.
Well, you know, you don't, then you don't need an alarm clock to get a nice rooster.
Yeah.
Yeah, right. Why you an alarm clock? Well, you can get a battery one, so you don't cost electricity. Any other things on growth management?
No, Mr. Chairman.
I just did my list of that.
Um, I already mentioned a few scheduling things, that your next meeting is pretty routine on September sixteenth. October seventh, there's a lot of hearings, but a few of them are just a couple minutes each. We are slammed, as you know, these days. And, um, just to let you know, as you know, my hours were cut last year, and it is resulting in delaying things. Normally, if someone comes in and sit and is looking to apply to you for public hearing, it's three to four weeks. Between the workload and my reduction, and we're booming, if someone walked in tomorrow, it's seven weeks at this point. There's nothing we can do about it. It's a combination of the amount of activity, and I lost two hundred eight hours. And there's only so many hours to do this within what I've been reduced to, and so.
And town hall is closed on Fri-.
And closed on Fridays in terms of processing.
So instead.
While I work on Fridays outside of this office, you need to be in this room to do a lot of this processing crunching it into Monday through Thursday results and delays. There's nothing we can do about it.
There's nothing, there's nothing at all. We can't request anything, we can't do anything.
Well, I would request, um, I've been told from two sources, one, John McGrath mentioned that he didn't know a dollar amount, but apparently at the Fall Town Meeting for free cash allocation, there's a significant decent amount of funding. And at this morning's department head meeting, the town accountant mentioned that I was, I had a personnel matter, I was, personal matter, I was out of town this morning, but I was told from other department heads that she mentioned that we're in the better financial shape in terms of revenue flowage since two thousand and eight. I I could respectfully request that you send a note, as you have in the past, um, to Selectment and Finance Committee, asking that I be restored. And as Peter Bory on the EDC mentioned, they could restore me at a town meeting funding, they could even go to FinCom and do it at a FinCom meeting.
Can we at least get a temporary? Because the the reason why we're here is for kind of customer service for our.
I would not recommend a temporary, and I wouldn't legally accept that. I think I should be restored.
I I agree, but I wouldn't.
The idea of for three months you can have extra hours, I wouldn't accept it. I I mean, that's unacceptable and it's inappropriate. I was singled out, I was singled out, and I'm not gonna get into all that for a reduction that I did not agree to. And I think the arguments that some people made of, well, times are tight financially, it doesn't hold water anymore. And you're seeing the results of this now, so it it couldn't hurt. You sent that note periodically before, whether it has an impact or not, it 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 might have an impact, you never know.
Do that again, just.
And a lot of us should know the amount of wait time to get on a meeting to that seven week backlog.
Yeah.
Because that affects people that they, for business.
Oh, yeah. And I don't wanna do that, but it it's a combination of the heavy load and the reduction of hours. You do get what you schedule. It just works out that way. Try to avoid that. Another delay on, to show what Jane and I are juggling, normally in August, I give you draft annual goals and objectives, and we finalize in September. I will try to get you drafts two weeks from now, but it might be October seventh because of everything we're doing. You know, again, only so many hours in the week, but I'm doing the best we can, so.
Do you do you think the town will go back to a five day week instead of just a four day? I mean, I I know you're open for ten hours a day, but you know, that eight hour day, five days a week, it just, just seems a lot better.
No, I agree.
I agree in terms of, by saying, well, the same number of weekly hours exist. It doesn't result in being able to process. You lose a day or even part of a day in terms of faxing to the paper on public hearing, processing public hearing, dealing with people who can't get in touch with you who are applicants or concerned butters. You lose and everything dominoes out of that, and we've experienced that for a year now. And it's it's getting worse as the economy recovers. Jane pointed out to me today, show how busy we are. Annually, the portion of your application fees that come in, that go into the general fund versus your revolving fund, we average about over seven thousand a year. In the past two months, did you tell me, we've taken in how much? Forty-six hundred, I think?
Forty, forty-five.
Forty-five, forty-six, just in two months.
More than half.
That reflects the level of boom. At the last EDC meeting, Robin Craver attended, and it was a compliment, but it shows the intensity of development. She said that, um, she took the development report I do a few annually, and she met with Moody's. They come up every few years, the town treasurer coordinates this to go over bond, potential increase in town bond. And in that meeting, she read my development summary that I provided to you and you provided to them. And she said she read it from start to finish, and I'm quoting her, the Moody's people were flabbergasted, that was her phrase, of the level of development activity we're having. They go from town to town, city to city. It struck them. We're we're booming and yet we're running on part cylinder. And that's what you get. You can't, you can only, you know, juggle it so much. It's a full-time workload with a part-time hour schedule. No matter how they wanna parse it.
Well, if you think about it, if somebody comes to put a plan board tonight, gets an A and X line, and some other plan approved, Jane doesn't have time tomorrow to do it, but she would probably have time on a Friday and have the developer pick it up on Friday. Now, he can't pick it up until probably Tuesday.
Yeah.
Because by the time she coordinates everything that's happening tonight, that takes up all of Thursday's day. And then she's not gonna be able to do that guy's plan.
Especially at this time of the year, when the weather is such a big deal to get things started, to get the the that delay.
I can jury work to some degree, because I still do things on Friday, I'm just not in here. I meet in the field. I've met people in the library at times. I bring things on flash drive and I can keep working on your decisions and letters. But I can only do a certain amount of that without being over there. And that doesn't happen, so that slows down too, and it dominoes everything. We run, we both run into it in our own way, and I can't speak for other departments, but I'm sure they're dealing with their own version of that. And you add that to an increase of permit and development activity in this town, and this is what the problem grows. This is what you got.
Is that a Selectment decision? Can they decide to open deck up on Friday or does it have to get?
I assume they, they did, wasn't the Selectman that made the decision?
Mm-hmm.
Um, so do you wanna, I asked the board, do you guys wanna send some type of a letter to the Selectman again, asking to reinstate the hours?
Yep.
And show that, some of the stuff that was discussed here?
Yeah, that the workload has decreased, and that it's deep, it's a deteriorating in the customer service.
Yeah, that would deteriorate, and that the, could be six or seven weeks before somebody gets an answer.
Absolutely. Well, is on a meeting agenda item.
If you can do that.
Yeah, I'll draft up and finalize with you. Thank you. A few other items, we haven't heard any response or reaction to your letter to National Grid on this assembly.
Awesome.
There's a company out of Georgia named Power Secure, and they're the contractor hired to actually build the facility. And Rebecca Fleckinger, the woman who is their project manager, came up from Georgia the other day, and I met with her. And I briefed her, she wasn't aware of any of this, and she said, "It won't affect her work, because all they do is build it, and then the client, National Grid, are the ones who will hopefully comply." And she said, "But I'm glad you told me, so at least I know." The other one that we haven't heard anything is, I told you that Burijo, the one that they built on North Oxford, we didn't know until recently when they told us that they are just building that, and they've decided to sell it to National Grid. So I informed them, and they said, "National Grid said that they talked to me, and they don't need to do it." And I corrected them that it's mandatory. And so it's been about three weeks, and no one's come back. So the ball's in their court, and it's their problem. You know, the building commissioner will enforce your requirements, and that's where we are.
It's great that you guys communicate, huh, because it's a bit...
I know they haven't tied it into the street yet, it's still...
Yeah, he's not allowing that to happen, because if they tie in, then they can just plug in and violate. So he's holding it at that stage, that's what he, that's what he's doing. A couple other upcoming hearings, separate from the zoning ones, we've got three application hearings. Your next meeting in two weeks is the solar from Zero Point for the INCOM property, up on the hill behind INCOM. And then on October seventh, Ron Lemansky applied the other day for a special permit for commercial signage for the site across from CVS. The bylaw, if you're going to a certain size, you need planning board special permit. I'll put that on for October seventh. And also, we received from Burton Engineering, a one-meg solar site plan on the Charlton Orchard property. The Florida company was gonna lease from them about five acres into a one-meg, so that's on for October seventh too. There's a gentleman who's hired an engineer to put together on a piece of property on Route twenty that he's entering into purchase and sale to put a four thousand square foot building for his business. It would be the headquarters for his small business, but he asked me not to go public yet on the specifics. So that's also in pre-application. And we've got that large one I told you, is still moving forward on the six-figure square footage on the warehouse. It's still moving forward nicely. And all the other projects that are in the field are building pretty good. There was a final walkthrough with Graves this morning on Carpenter Hill Road, so I should have something for you in the next meeting of whether they finished everything or not.
They haven't tied into the grid yet, have they?
No, no, they're heading into that though. I thought that, I'd just update you, and maybe over the winter, when Russ Jennings comes back on the one he came in tonight, he and Ron Gothia met with me recently about maybe in May proposing a zoning revision for some property that Ron owns that would change the zoning from agricultural to R forty to allow some multifamily. What I've told him is, when someone wants to do that, they usually come to the planning board with more of a concept layout, at least at the sketch level from a surveyor or an architect. And he hasn't hired anybody yet, so even though he wanted to come in for the fall, I said, you know, it's too soon for the Fall Town Meeting. And you really need to work with the board and put your idea together and head for the Maytown meeting. So I think over the winter, they can come back, and I hope that in the near future, he'll hire somebody, and they can whip up some concepts for him and for you guys. That's that. Just going through my list. Thursday and Friday, September twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, I'll be in Hartford at the annual Southern New England APA Conference, Connecticut, Mass, Rhode Island. It alternates between Worcester, Providence, and Hartford, year after year after year. So two years ago was Worcester, last year was Providence, and it's Hartford, then I'll be back to Worcester next year. So I hope to bring back some stuff to give the board from that. Just looking through my list quickly. Just to let you know, there's a new phone system installed in the town hall that we're all getting used to the past couple of days. There's a lady who's met with me, again, not ready to go public on specifics, but she has some property that she's looking, that she owns on Freeman Road, and she'd like to probably A and R into two lots, and then come in for a combined reduced frontage and common driveway special permit for some housing for a family, that type of thing. So that's in the pipeline. The last item, well, this is kind of unusual, see where it goes over time. I forgot the name of the subdivision, I'm sorry, but Joe Carron's subdivision from about fifteen years ago?
Bracken Hill?
No. Bracken Hill, yeah, Bracken Hill. This weird, it's heading in a very odd way this week, we'll see where this goes. I was hired fourteen years ago, and the year before I was hired, he got approval about, well, two or three years before that, he was approved. And the year before I got hired, it was time for him to convey the open space. Now, most people convey to either the Conservation Commission or the Charlton Heritage Trust, or the Greater Worcester Land Trust, like the Gunthers did. Well, again, the year before I got hired, none of us in the room were affiliated with the planning board. He came to the board, and he wanted to convey the land to a Washington DC-based preservation entity called the National Heritage Trust, I have it written down, the specific exact name, National Heritage Foundation. So the board looked at it, the board agreed. Technically, under Massachusetts subdivision law, as long as the entity is properly structured, the developer can do any of those entities, as long as you check the structure. I get hired a year later, I look through the file, and it made sense. If you look at who that entity is, that Washington-based, they do this across the country. A little unusual that you'd go to somebody outside of the local area, but he did. Well, he called me the other day, and then in follow-up, a gentleman named David Coney from Washington had a conversation with me on the phone. What he told me the other day is, he had been paying them every few years, under his agreement with them, some management fees, plus there's a dam on the property, and the National Heritage Foundation, in some manner, recently went through bankruptcy reorganization. So they're trying to downscale, and they'd like to no longer own it. And they'd like to have some more local entity that's properly structured to take the open space preservation ownership. So I told him to ask the gentleman to call me, and he did today. And little unusual, odd conversation, I'll tell you how it went. He said exactly what Joe said, and then he added that if they can find some local entity, they'd really like somebody to buy the land from them. And I said, first of all, I said, under Chapter forty-one preservation law, you can only sell it to an entity that the planning board reviews and approves. You have control, he can't just sell it without your permission. Secondly, it has to be to another entity that fits that. And he said, "That's what we plan to do, but I'm hoping that one of these entities will buy it from us for ten thousand dollars." And I said, "You can always ask any of the entities that you go to locally, but they're gonna look at you and say, 'We expect you to give us an endowment to manage it for us.'" And he said, "Well, you know, we need money, we're struggling as a group, and I think that's necessary for us." So I said, "Well, I'm just giving you my opinion, I don't think that would work, but what I request is you send me an email or a letter that I can provide to the planning board to look at in the near future." And I think what we could do to help you a little bit is to help you together reach out to one of three entities, the Town Conservation Commission, the local Natural Heritage Trust, or the Greater Worcester Land Trust. And we can connect you. If they want to negotiate or communicate with you about a transfer, and one of those entities wants it, then together you come to the planning board. The planning board would review it, and the planning board would authorize it. If you can't find somebody to transfer it to, I don't know what to tell you. You certainly can't put it on the market legally in Massachusetts. And he seemed a little disturbed by it all, and he said, "Well, thank you, I'll send you an email with correspondence, and we'll be in touch." So that's what started the past day or two on this old piece of open space in this old subdivision.
Have you ever seen any of these get sold before?
I've never seen one ever transfer.
From over a dollar?
From, at all, from the entity that initially took it.
Interesting.
Yeah, at the end of the cul-de-sac, there's a big piece of open space that was permanently preserved. To answer Patty's question, I have never, in my career, seen whatever entity initially takes one of these that the board approved for permanent preservation, say, "We'd like to transfer it to another entity." I've never seen it. It's doable in the manner I described, but if he can't find somebody willing to take it, he's stuck with the property and his life.
The liability and the upkeep of a dam too could be costly to...
I think that would be, that would be a possible deal killer, I would assume. The Pritchard Pond thing was laborious, I mean, that went on forever. Can you, can you see the three entities, the only ones I can think of, willing to take it, plus pay him ten thousand dollars? You know?
They wouldn't wanna touch it. No, you don't wanna get involved with that, especially if you're...
They may be stuck. If they walked away from it, I wouldn't even get involved, it's not our world. It would be more town council and other entities in this town's government of their legal responsibility on maintaining that dam and dealing with it. It sounds like that's a money concern with them, and they're trying to take it out of their inventory of properties across the country. I've just never seen this type of concern pop up ever. We'll see what happens. Those are my items, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay. We've got some minutes to go over. There's one executive one, so we'll have to go into session for that, Alan.
Are we gonna be able to even vote on the executive, oh, Alicia and Orji?
If you have a majority of people in the room tonight who were at that meeting, and I'll note it in the minutes, you can do it if you wish, it's up to you.
On the executive one, I'd rather wait, if nobody else disagrees.
No.
I'll promise that. The executive one.
I wasn't present for the June third one.
Okay, so we're not gonna have enough of that vote now. Is this on, the cow vote on the June third one?
Sure, if you wish. The only restrictions on cows and alternate are on certain permits, but not in a non-permit. A board can allow the alternate on non-permit routine administration to be voted in.
Right, and take a few minutes to read the June third. Any questions on June third?
No.
Do I have a motion to accept the June third minutes as read?
Sumo.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We do the June seventeenth? Any questions on the June seventeenth?
No.
Do I have a motion?
Sumo.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we'll let the June seventeenth executive session go for now until we get a number for it.
Do you want these back then, because they're not approved?
Yeah.
Give them.
Okay.
Two of ours.
Can you make a note to put this on the next agenda? Alan, these things that you gave us, Katie?
Oh, yeah, just because Burton sometimes does a very thick application with a lot of appendix attachments. So rather than mail it to you, that's the Burton application filing for, one of them is for INCOM solar at the next meeting, and one of them is for the Charlton Orchard on October seventh. So Jane and I thought you could take it home instead of we put it in a thick folder. Most people don't do that thick, but Burton's very obsessive, which is okay. It's interesting, Murray.
Um... Any miscellaneous things anybody we should discuss? Okay, um... That concludes the scheduled agenda items portion of tonight's meeting. Do I have a motion?
Sumo.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.